Mr. Chambers.
Here.
Dr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
And Mr. Williams.
Here.
Hi, thank you everyone for being here. Please stand up and pray. Our most kind and loyal members of the United States of America, we send you our best regards. We want to wish you the best in your life. We hope you're having a very hard time with your life. I know it's hard for me to live in a world of poverty. During the first season of the recession, we did that to the military, that they had sacrificed in the war for the freedom of the individual and the birth of peace. We asked you to keep the community. We didn't give them power to do anything. We didn't defend the nation from the enemy. I asked you to get us medicine, gas, and give us all the ingredients we have in the community.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no particular injustice or wrong.
We have a warrant present. I would ask for a motion that we would not communicate about both the United States and the Republican Party.
So move, second.
I clerk Allen.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Dr. Lee. Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Schenhalster.
Aye.
Aye.
We are ready. Under oath, this is tonight, we have to vote with you to consider rezoning of five lots, which involve, all involve the same project. Once it has been determined that the hearing has been properly advertised, then the clerk will bring the charges amended. We will then hear the advice of the decision of the planning and zoning commission. The chair will recognize any person or persons who would like to speak on behalf of the amendment.
The chair would then hear from any person who would like to speak in opposition of the amendment. We will give, we will then give an opportunity for rebuttal. When the chair recognizes any person or persons who would like to testify, I would ask that you first give your name and your address for the record. Anyone who would like to speak is encouraged to do so. However, in the essence of time, I am requesting that you keep your comments as brief as possible. This hearing is to consider ordinance zero fourteen ten dash twenty, fourteen ten dash twenty-one, fourteen ten dash twenty-two, fourteen ten dash twenty-three, and fourteen ten dash twenty-four. All of these ordinances are involving a single project. If there is no objections, I will ask Ms. Russian to read each one of the ordinances by caption and vote on them en masse. Is there anyone that has an objection? Has the public, has the public hearing been properly advertised?
It has.
Has it been properly posted?
It has.
I will ask Ms. Russian to read each of the ordinances by caption.
Ordinance zero fourteen ten zero two zero. An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the tenth day of December two thousand and two, known as the Land Development Code of the city of Millisville, Georgia. Ordinance rezonance property located at six three one North Columbia Street from C.C. to M.R. two.
It was approved unanimously.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this amendment? I'll recognize Ms. Graham.
Good evening. We were requesting that all five of these parcels, the public hearing be conducted as one, since one parcel is continued from the other. I'll have to pass an order for this development to go through. And when you vote en masse, if you could vote on all five ordinances at the same time. Because like I said, once this is complete, that will be combined and that will be constructed in like three buildings with twenty-one units, or possibly eighty-four bedrooms. And I didn't know if Ms. Russian needed to go ahead and read in caption all five.
I'll continue for the next one.
Or notices. And P and C did vote on these unanimously. All of them passed unanimously.
And Ms. Walden, I had sent all of council a letter earlier advising you that because one of the applicants in this particular rezoning is Mr. Davis, who is in my office, that I am accusing myself from providing any legal advice relative to this particular zoning. In the event, as I explained in the letter, should a legal question arise that Ms. Graham cannot answer, Ms. Graham's obviously very knowledgeable with our zoning ordinance, we would have to table this matter tonight and have those questions certified to someone other than myself that could answer those questions. Hopefully that will not happen, but I want you to keep that in mind. I've asked Ms. Graham to come up here to be in a position to answer any questions should, should they arise. Any questions with regards to that?
That would like to speak in favor of this? No one else? Okay.
Ordinance fourteen ten zero two one. An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the tenth day of December two thousand and two, known as the Land Development Code of the city of Millisville, Georgia. Ordinance rezonance property located at six two five North Columbia Street from C.C. to M.R. two. Ordinance fourteen ten zero two two. An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the tenth day of December two thousand and two, known as the Land Development Code of the city of Millisville, Georgia. Ordinance rezonance property located at six zero five North Columbia Street from C.C. to M.R. two. Ordinance fourteen ten zero two three. An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the tenth day of December two thousand and two, known as the Land Development Code of the city of Millisville, Georgia. Ordinance rezonance property located at four three one West Charlton Street from C.C. to M.R. two. And ordinance fourteen ten zero two four. An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the tenth day of December two thousand and two, known as the Land Development Code of the city of Millisville, Georgia. Ordinance rezonance property located at four one nine West Charlton Street from C.C. to M.R. two.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in favor?
Good evening.
Good evening, would you?
Yes ma'am, I'm Cedric Davis. I live at one eighty Pearl Drive and I am the applicant of three of those properties, six oh five, six twenty-five, and four thirty-six. And also standing on behalf of Kimberly Thomas at four nineteen, we're the applicants for those rezonings. And we, we ask that you approve those. Mr. Ashley Hill, if you can present what his plans are for the property. If anyone have any questions for me, I'll entertain what I can and answer about it. Other than that, I just want to rise in favor of the rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Good evening, my name is Ashley Hill. I live at one Oak Grove Road, Athens, Georgia, three zero six zero seven. First of all, I'd like to thank Mervyn for putting up with me. I've been harassing her for about a year now. And she's been very gracious to me and very helpful, and I want to thank her for that. I'm a firm believer that just because something's multifamily, it can be a responsible project. It can be a very aesthetically pleasing project. And we feel a responsibility, especially so here, because it's in a very visible place in this community. And so we want to, I don't know, go beyond the call of duty, unless you're the right term. We want to make sure that we make this very aesthetically pleasing and because it is in a visible location. And actually, I don't think these expensive architectural renderings really do it justice, but basically, we wanted to take some old grist mill type architecture and blend it some urban with it and come up with something unique and knock our partner by. Since we had this done, we've actually kind of gone back to the drawing board and we've actually decided to take this porch all the way across the front. So instead of three individual porches, we actually take one porch roof all the way across the front, put a five B galvanum metal roof across the front. Really dress up the exterior with a lot of architectural detailing. Make it very pleasing to look at. Our project does come around a parcel. You can't really see it all that well, but there's a parcel in the middle of the project that Mrs. Johnson owns. And I was able to meet with her grandson on site. I don't want to put words in his mouth. He's not here tonight, but I believe we had a very positive conversation. And I believe that they view this as a positive thing for their property. It's not property that, it's not her primary residence. It is rental property that she owns. And so, had a great meeting with him, great conversation. And I believe that we will be, we would be good neighbors. Not going to ran on for long. Obviously, I'm here for any questions that you may, may have and just ask for your support. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who's going to say in favor? If not, I would like to do my own way to speak in our position. For motion that we accept this?
Ms. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we accept the findings of the Planning and Zoning Board and that we pass and adopt. Should I call them out by number? Or ordinance?
No.
Each one of the ordinances that, as they were read.
Second. Okay, I'd ask the clerk if she would to call the row.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Dr. Lee. Mr. Reynolds. Ms. Schenhalster.
Aye.
And Mr. Williams.
Mr. Mayor, this may be related to one or the other. I'm about to stay on this, on this, on this project.
Ordinance zero one four one one dash zero two seven. An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the tenth day of December two thousand and two, known as the Land Development Code of the city of Millisville, Georgia. Ordinance rezonance property located at one four one West Baldwin Street from C.C. to M.R. two.
First read. Our next item on the agenda, we have the first read of ordinance fourteen eleven dash two, dash twenty-eight. Would you, would the clerk please read that ordinance in caption? Okay.
Ordinance zero one four one one dash zero two eight. An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the tenth day of December two thousand and two, known as the Land Development Code of the city of Millisville, Georgia. Ordinance rezonance property located at three nine zero South Wilkinson Street from C.C. to M.R. two.
To amend the Main Street Downtown Development Authority bylaws.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. If there is no discussion, I'd ask the clerk to call the row.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Schenhalster. And Mr. Mullins.
Aye.
Resolution one four one one dash zero four three. To authorize the contract with Jack L. Daniel, Inc., D.B.A. Credit Bureau Associates of Georgia for the collection of delinquent utility accounts.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. We have a resolution fourteen eleven dash oh four four. Would the clerk please read the resolution in caption?
Resolution one four one one dash zero four four. To authorize the write-off of delinquent utility accounts.
Do I hear a motion? I make the motion to approve.
Second.
When we bring in the resolution, the date is not correct. It has twenty-one oh four. I don't think we'll all be around to read that one.
Mayor, I'd like to recognize Brenda Joseph to talk about that resolution.
The last time we did one of these was in March twenty-ten. So it's been a while. All of their accounts, we just want to report and the system actually pulls the report. All of these accounts have been finalized. There are two thousand three hundred ninety-six accounts. That's quite a bit. For a total in the water department of two hundred and three thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-four cents and in solid waste, which is garbage, for sixty-three thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So in the neighborhood of two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. We doing allowance for uncollectible accounts every year. So this doesn't affect our bottom line. We've already taken into account that we have accounts that we won't collect. So it doesn't affect our financial statement. Any questions?
The question I do have, and I'm sure that we tried to collect as much as possible, was some idea of where are these, is this residential, commercial, or mix of all of the above?
Probably ninety-nine percent of residential accounts that we've got is mixed. A lot of these accounts are people that move out of town and leave an account. And you know, we have a deposit, but the deposit won't be enough to cover the balance on their accounts that they've got. And twenty-four hundred accounts is a lot of accounts. That's a lot. So the average of these accounts would probably be thirty, thirty to fifty dollars.
But these are the accounts that, that Mr. Daniels will be collecting on, right?
And these accounts have been actively listed. And Mr. Jarrett had a very valid question. He wanted us to discuss and write them off. Why don't we collect them first? In order for us to get them into a file that we can process through the collection agency, we have to write them off. It takes them out of our accounts receivable, puts them in another accounts receivable that's considered bad debt, and it's in a file that we can actually process and give to the collection. This is just the standard that we've got in our country. We have no other. Any other questions? And they do recover some of the money. And when they recover, they put it back in the A.R. and they make payments.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Dr. Lee.
Aye.
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 That motion passes. At this time, I'm going to call on the city manager, Mr. Barry Jarrett, to give us a report.
Yes, what I'd like to ask is to request that we have an item where we want you to consider grant application. This is a late development and that's the reason it was not on the agenda is I'd like to ask you to amend the agenda to allow that item to be discussed and then for you to consider whatever action you'd like to take on that. And if you do amend the agenda, I'd like to recognize both of the words. Frank Ball.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we amend the agenda to allow Mr. Ball to, to add his presentation.
Second. I have a motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk if she'll call the row.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Dr. Lee. Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Schenhalster.
Aye.
And Mr. Mullins.
Aye.
Thank you ma'am. The, I guess the item under consideration is a recreational trails program grant application. That grant application is a, is a part of the National Resources administered program to provide and maintain recreational trails throughout the state. It's a grant, it's a hundred thousand dollars. Evidently, these, this grant, the call for projects came, emerged last month. We, we were approached by Little Healthy Baldwin about preparing an application for recreational trails program grant to extend the fishing creek community trail from this existing terminus at the Elbert Street Bridge along the city sewer easement to the Roxas Street Bridge. And this, and the city would be the titular grant applicant, but Little Healthy Baldwin has already assembled the grant application on the city's behalf and they've already secured third party funding commitments for any kind of, and cash to fulfill the MASH requirement. So it wouldn't involve any funding on the part of the city to apply for the grant. And they, the upshot is the grant application is due to be postmarked on the twenty-sixth of November. And I guess it was not here before an opportunity to go before the council in a work session for discussion. Under the milestones of the grant approval process, it would be, the selection would be made after June twenty-fifteen, at which time, if selected, the city would be, be in our vicinity, project agreement for the city to execute. So prior to that time, the city would have to secure amended easements, you know, for, for property owners. But beyond that, the application is ready for submission if the city, if the council wants to consider authorizing the city to apply, apply for this recreational trails program grant. So be happy to field any questions or otherwise elaborate on any part of the agenda.
Is there any questions?
One thing that you had in conversation that I think you and I had, trying to think, sometimes I forget who I even had conversations with, but there's a commercial piece of property that is at the Wilkinson Street Bridge.
Right.
That has, is a grocery store. I won't name it. But it has indicated that it would allow parking once the trail was completed, which would allow people to either park their car and walk the trail that would extend back towards the freeway. And then also for bicycles, if somebody carried their bike down on the back of their car or whatever. But thought this was a big gesture by that grocery store that has been down there for some point of time.
And under the scope, that would be one of the trailhead access points at the, at that bridge to the, there's another one at Burke Street area where it would be another access point. So the opportunities to access the trail and utilize the trailings are the two access points. Yes ma'am, I guess they are, they are going through three or four private parcels. They would be, assuming the city can secure amended sewer easements, they would go, they would be aligned with existing sewer easements. And so there is, there is one parcel owned by GMC that, I guess that's considered private too, I guess. I think they're, they're interested in conveying that also too. I think Little Healthy Baldwin is, is possible to maybe acquire that.
Does anyone have any questions? Do I hear a motion that we accept?
Motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk to call the row.
Mr. Chambers.
Aye.
Dr. Lee. Mr. Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Schenhalster.
Aye.
And Mr. Mullins.
Aye.
We have appointments to do. The first appointment is Greg Tyson. He is appointed by the. The second appointment is a replace, is a reappointment. The second appointment is a replace, is a reappointment. We have one.
Mayor.
Do they do that too? Okay. I would ask for, um, should I do, should I do Greg Tyson first?
Do them individually.
So moved.
Second.
Um, one thing, uh, that I might want to mention very quickly, and I think that the, uh, appointment for, uh, Mr. Tyson is a dual appointment that, uh, and it's already gone before the county, I believe, and has been approved and is awaiting our approval.
Okay. Then I need, uh, the motion and the second that we can approve him. You have it? Okay. All right. Then I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Hester?
Aye.
And Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Tyson has been approved. The second appointment was a reappointment for Cheryl Crumbly to the Downtown Development Authority of Milledgeville, County. Do I have a motion and a second on that?
The, uh,
Development Authority of Milledgeville, County, Economic Development.
Move we approve.
Second.
One, one thing I may mention, uh, we, um, approved, uh, Ms. Crumbly's appointment this past year. It was for an unexpired term of, uh, Dr. Joanne Jones. I think she actually stepped down a year early, uh, for her, uh, term. And, um, so Ms. Crumbly has already been on for one, uh, for that one year. Uh, this would be for a six-year term.
Okay, um, we have, I, I have asked for the reappointment of her. Do I have a motion and a second on that? I do have it. Okay, then.
Aye.
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 That she has been approved. We have one alcohol.
Mayor and attorney, the resolution, the, the approval that was just given as far as the grant was concerned.
Mm-hmm.
I believe we need a resolution. I believe we need to amend the agenda for council to pass a resolution if you support that grant.
Well, we had a, I mean, we, we can, but we had a motion to, to accept the recommendation of Mr., uh, Mr. Ball in authorizing, uh, uh, the city to apply for that, that grant. I think that is satisfactory, but I have no problem with doing a resolution.
Sir, it does require a resolution to, for companies to go through the application. And if we did for our support, maybe a resolution would be sufficient.
Oh, I didn't know the clerk had a resolution. If it requires a written resolution, then, uh, as opposed to just an excerpt from the minutes, then, uh, you definitely want to, um, to proceed with the resolution.
With that being the case, I would make a motion that we, um, consider the resolution in support of this project. Amending the agenda to consider.
Okay, I'm gonna need a number for that resolution. Do we have a number for it?
Uh, I second that motion for amendment of the, um, agenda. See, and call the roll.
Aye.
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 And Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Resolution fourteen eleven dash zero four eight. A resolution of the mayor and alderman of the city of Milledgeville authorizing the city manager to apply for a Georgia recreational trails program grant.
Move we approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Ms., Ms. Walden, before she called the roll, shouldn't that authorize, um, the mayor instead of the city manager? Shouldn't that, shouldn't it read that we're authorizing the mayor?
I think it probably should. I'd need a legal opinion on that.
It, yeah, it can. When we looked at the letter today, uh, it could, or, uh, the city manager's signature or the mayor pro tempore's signature. But if there's actually gonna be the signing of an application, then that would have to be done by the mayor pro tempore. Make it the mayor.
Resolution fourteen eleven dash oh four five. A resolution of the mayor and alderman of the city of Milledgeville authorizing the mayor to apply for a Georgia recreational trails program grant.
A point of order, there was a motion and a second on the table. We will need to vote, we'll need to vote, uh, against that resolution as previously read, I believe.
Yeah, we can get a motion to amend that resolution. I, I would make a motion to amend the resolution that was previously read to, uh, strike from it, city manager, and to add, uh, the position of mayor. And to renumber it. And to renumber.
Second.
To forty-five.
Okay, I have a motion on that. Now do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I would ask clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Are we, what are we voting on? You're voting on the amendment now. Amendment, okay. All right, that's what I thought. But I just wanted to make sure. We could vote in mass on all this. Just have one vote and push it on through.
Uh, I would vote aye. I would vote aye.
You ready? Mr. Chambers? Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Hester?
Aye.
And Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Motion to approve the resolution as amended.
Second.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Hester?
Aye.
And Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
That passes. All right.
We have an application for an alcohol beverage license to sell retail beer and wine packaged to go from Ansel Patel of one four three one West Hancock Street. Doing business as The Marketplace Two.
Do I?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
And I have a motion and a second.
I have a question before we get started.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Hester?
Aye.
And Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
All of these applications for renewal have been approved by the fire department, police department, and appropriate fees have been paid. Street Hand Company LLC doing business as Ka Ta, twenty-six hundred North Columbia Street. Beer and wine consumption on the premises. Eagle Package Store, seven hundred North Columbia Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. Quick Stop Three, twenty-six fifty-three North Columbia Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. The Beverage Marketplace, twenty-nine ten Heritage Place. Beer, wine, and liquor packaged to go. Flash Foods Number One Eighteen, twelve hundred Vincent Highway. Beer and wine packaged to go. Flash Foods Number One Seventeen, six hundred North Jefferson Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. Quickie Flash Foods Number Two Thirty-One, nineteen thirty-five North Jefferson Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. HAC Incorporated doing business as Piggly Wiggly, thirteen ten North Columbia Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. Apple Georgia LLC doing business as Applebee's, one zero six Robertson Mill Road. Beer, wine, liquor, and Sunday sales consumption on the premises. Golden Pantry Number Ninety-Eight, two zero four East Hancock Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. Longhorn Steakhouse, twenty-four seventy North Columbia Street. Beer, wine, liquor, and Sunday sales consumption on the premises. Kane Stop and Shop, nine three zero North Columbia Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. Sedexo at GCSU, two three one West Hancock Street. Beer, wine, and liquor consumption on the premises. Sedexo at the Centennial Center, two five one South Clark Street. Beer, wine, and liquor consumption on the premises. Sedexo at the Old Governor's Mansion, one twenty South Clark Street. Beer, wine, and liquor consumption on the premises. Sedexo at Magnolia Ballroom, three three one West Hancock Street. Beer, wine, and liquor consumption on the premises. Dev Nine LLC doing business as Discount Tobacco, ten fifty-one North Jefferson Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. Laxme Twelve LLC doing business as Discount Tobacco, sixteen ninety-eight North Columbia Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. McKeely LLC doing business as Discount Tobacco, sixteen sixty North Columbia Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. Al Tequila Grill, one six eight Garrett Way. Beer, wine, liquor, and Sunday sales consumption on the premises. Seven Forty-Seven Gas and Food Mart Inc., one nine one West Hand Drew Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. Secreche LLC doing business as Gil's Beer Growlers, twenty-nine ten Heritage Place. Beer packaged to go. Warren Hawkins American Legion, four thirty West MLK Drive. Beer, wine, and liquor consumption on the premises. Georgia CVS Pharmacy LLC Number Forty-five sixty-five, nine sixty North Columbia Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. Lorena LLC doing business as Little Tokyo, twenty-six oh one North Columbia Street. Beer, wine, liquor, and Sunday sales consumption on the premises. Leesby King, twenty-four eighty-five North Columbia Street. Beer, wine, and liquor consumption on the premises. Ruby Tuesday, two four four zero North Columbia Street. Beer, wine, liquor, and Sunday sales consumption on the premises. HAC Inc., DBA Piggly Wiggly, seven three one South Wayne Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. Dial Gem Corp LLC doing business as Dollar General, fifteen fifty North Columbia Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. BRG Beverages doing business as Chili's Bar and Grill, twenty-five ninety-six North Columbia Street. Beer, wine, liquor, and Sunday sales consumption on the premises. Shy Arav Inc. doing business as H and H Deli, fourteen forty-one Vincent Highway. Beer and wine packaged to go. Velvet Elvis LLC doing business as The Velvet Elvis, one thirteen West Hancock Street. Beer, wine, and liquor consumption on the premises. Asian Bistro and Grill, one two four West Hancock Street. Beer, wine, and liquor consumption on the premises. Jay McCroup LLC doing business as Discount Tobacco, six four zero West South Wilkinson Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. Cody One LLC doing business as Discount Tobacco, nine seventeen North Columbia Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. Kirishima, one four zero West Hancock Street. Beer and wine consumption on the premises. Wright Aid Corporation, two four zero zero North Columbia Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. Dollar General, two zero seven Robertson Mill Road. Beer and wine packaged to go. Jorner and Ewing Inc., DBA Amiches, one zero one West Hancock Street. Beer, wine, liquor, and Sunday sales consumption on the premises. Food Depot, eighteen ten North Columbia Street. Beer and wine packaged to go. Am City Package Store, fifteen fifty-seven Vincent Highway. Beer, wine, and liquor packaged to go.
Do I hear a motion that these applications for renewal be approved?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Mayor, one thing I did want to mention before, uh, rumors get out, and that is that Sedexo of Georgia College is the for applications or for the new vendor licenses that we have. I just did not want rumors getting out that the Centennial Center and Old Governor's Mansion and the Magnolia Ballroom are gonna be serving alcoholic beverages en masse. Uh, this is for, um, certain events that come up throughout the year.
And they're location sensitive as well, the licenses are.
Okay, I need a motion and a second on these renewals. Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll ask clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Hester?
Aye.
And Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Aye.
One thing I want to mention, and that was in our approval of appointments to the economic development, that Mr. Paul Dean is stepping down. And for many, many years, he was the face of GTE, then Windstream, Altel, and has served at least 12 years on the economic development. Would like to thank him on behalf of city council and mayor, and certainly on behalf of the city of Milledgeville and Ballin County for his dedication and hard work toward economic development for this community.
And we thank him. Is there anyone else that would like to say anything? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.